All right, we're gonna call our meeting to order for March 4th, 2020. We are going to start with our consent agenda. We have minutes to approve from January 8th, 2020, January 20th, 2020, February 5th of 2020, and February 19th of 2020. We have warrants to approve, A2034S, AP2034, and AP2035. We have electronic pay stubs proposed by Human Resources on the content here, but we're going to nix that for now. Zatirka Park maintenance. We have receipt of vote of the Park and Recreation Commission for the DPW to take over that maintenance. Shala agricultural preservation restriction, just a vote of the Select Board, we did vote on that at town meeting. PVTA/COA van agreement, we've got a final vote and signature. And then we have a one-day liquor license for the Pyramid Mall of Hadley, Margarita Madness, April 2nd, 2020. May I have a motion? All those in favor? Oh, thank you for doing that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
When I went in to look at my board docs yesterday, none of this material was on there.
I know.
So, we'll get back at it and look at it, since I work full-time, so I just wanna see if we can get it up and post it. I would like the materials on there, if that's possible, please.
And I would really like it on Friday afternoon, then we have all weekend to look at it. I know there's some emergencies that come up, but if it can't get on the agenda, then it waits till next week?
I don't mind it on Monday, I'd just like to see it before the meeting.
Okay.
Is anyone here for public comment tonight, from 6:30 to 6:45? You have a three-minute period to make a comment. I don't know if anybody's here for that.
Maybe their comment about the warrant, 7.7 is it? About the cop parking on the common?
Oh, wait, on the agenda?
On the agenda, yeah.
Okay, we'll get to that, and then we can just touch base on it then. Yep, yep, yep. Anything else? I guess the first thing we'll hit is the, I'm just gonna skip down, Town of Hatfield, 350th anniversary invitation. Someone here from the Town of Hatfield? Were they gonna come?
They're gonna come.
They're gonna come. I thought I'd just get that on, I thought they might be here. We have an appointment at 6:45, so that's 10 minutes away.
Conway letter of support, is that what?
Yeah, we could do the Conway letter of support. Basically, the Town of Hadley is in receipt of a letter from the Selectmen of the Town of Conway, who expressed their support of S205 and H364, an act relative to the Rural Policy Advisory Commission. David, do you have some insight into those two acts of legislation?
Yes, so the Rural Policy Advisory Commission is a spinoff of the Rural Policy Initiative that's been in front of the Select Board in Western Massachusetts a couple of years. We had PVTA, PVPC rather, work on it, as well as the FERC. And the idea is that legislation passed in Boston very often is oriented towards urban, suburban communities, larger communities, and rural communities and maritime communities tend not to be considered in terms of the impacts of formula funding, density requirements, other kinds of regulations, anything that might be passed by the legislature. So, this would establish a Rural Policy Advisory Commission that would weigh in on any new act of legislation, and talk about its effects, both beneficial as well as detrimental to rural communities, communities and populations of 12,000 or fewer.
So, are they asking us to also send a letter of support to the State House?
They don't actually ask that, but they did send it to us, so...
Do we have the actual letter?
It should be there. I'll make sure you have a copy, I don't see it on the agenda.
Is it a long letter?
It's a one-pager.
Do you have one?
I don't have it, I have it right here.
You don't have it, okay.
I was just gonna say, someday you could read and I could...
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was...
Just kinda heard about them something that's not...
Well, right now, just an announcement that we're in the seat of.
Oh, okay, alright, gotcha.
Okay, yeah, so yeah, if we could get that letter, then we can put it on a future agenda item and look into that.
Twenty seats down front, right in the front there.
Best seats in the house. And then maybe we could just talk about the Town of Hadley website service interruption, just an explanation of that cancellation, or interruption, and then that caused the cancellation of several committee meetings due to posting problems. David, do you have anything on that?
So, earlier this week, we, or last week, it was last week, I misunderstood, the town's website crashed and could not be restored. We discovered that early on Monday morning, we worked with our IT people for all day long. Six hours after we discovered the failed website, we had not seen the website restored, which under the regulations of the Commonwealth meant that all the meetings that were posted for that Monday night and for Tuesday no longer had valid postings. This is according to the Attorney General. And we did restore the website the following day, but we had to cancel a number of meetings because of the problems with posting. This turned out to be an outside server, and it created problems all over the Commonwealth. Many of municipalities were affected, from Orleans in the east all the way to the Berkshires. So, we restored it, we're back running, and we're properly posting meetings. I'm exploring with the town clerk and the Attorney General's office a way to develop an alternate posting system that would not be susceptible to network outages. Right now, the Attorney General is saying that there is no alternate way of doing this, but there has to be, so I'll continue working on that. So, we have some resilience in our town posting issues.
And the vendor that was this Town Online, Towns Online?
This is, it was Civics Plus, and it was actually their vendor called Contigix Data Centers, and that's whose server failed.
Okay, so I mean, normally, I mean, here, sort of your hosting, we should have a failover. So, could we press whoever we're contracted through to press whoever they're contracting with to get a good answer on why this won't happen again, or what they'll do if this ever happens again?
As I understand, they're going to be reaching out to us all very soon, offering solutions for future times. This is the first time that's happened in seven years that we've been posting through this system, so it's not a very common occurrence, but they are definitely, they're definitely working on it on their end. But I will, I will reach out to them and reiterate that the Town of Hadley would really like them.
Okay.
Mr. Lusko from Hatfield.
Okay, great, this one. Is he out there in the hall?
He's up in the hall.
Yep, so we just wanted to, you can stand or sit, whatever you wanna do, but just wanted to, okay. No, we're excited that Hatfield is celebrating its 350th anniversary, and, you know, just wanted to, I'm glad you're here to present to us and tell us a little bit about what you guys are doing, and if we can help or participate or anything along those lines, so...
I'm Ed Lusko, and I co-chair the 350th celebration.
Sharon Nicholas, I'm a member of the steering committee and the historical representative for the 350th celebration.
You want to add anything?
No.
Okay, a little bit about what we're doing, okay, we're excited also about the parade, and the first thing that's coming up is the Incorporation Day, which is gonna be the 31st of May, that's in 1670, that's when the parade, and so what we do is every neckman, and we're excited about that, and that's why we're here tonight, to go over it with you, to see how you participate, and see how the two towns can work together. And Sharon?
Sure, I can give you some details on the day if you would like that.
Sure, yeah.
Great, okay, so I think you have a packet of information that Ed left, and maybe if I can just take you through some of these documents and explain some of them. So, in your packet, do you have a package? I can, I can show us.
It's scanned in, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, is it right there too?
Okay, so on the left-hand side, if you open your packet, it's basically information that we've been distributing for the past few months in terms of the overall schedule. It is pretty firm right now, it does say preliminary, but we're getting to the point where we know that these times are pretty accurate. Also, it gives you just some historical content about why we're celebrating the day. As Ed mentioned, the Town of Hatfield was, it was recorded to be a township of themselves on May 31st, 1670. So, basically, it's our birthday, and we're celebrating it with this Incorporation Day celebration. The second document in your left-hand side packet is the save-the-date letters that we sent out to state and federal elected officials in the state of Massachusetts, and also, and I hope you, and I hope you've got your letter, we sent it to the town Select Board and to the Historical Commission, and so, were you, did you receive that letter? Okay, great, thank you so much. We have had confirmation on, State Rep. Lacy Sabodosa will be attending, and State Senator John will be attending, and from Representative Jim McCollum's office, he, the office said that he does plan to attend unless he's pulled away for something. I'm still waiting on some responses from the other elected officials. On the right-hand side of your packet, it's just basically some information, some details as to what that day's going to consist of. Since the inhabitants on the west side of the river had to cross the river quite a bit for 10 years until they became township, we're kind of honoring that by building a boat and doing a river crossing in the morning. I've given you some details about the boat. We do have a backup in case the river is too high, we're just going to bring the boat up to the town hall for people to take a look at. The Congregational Church is gonna have a service, and Reverend Randy did say he was reaching out to your church, and hopefully we can have a joint, you know, Reverend Randy wants to have a joint service. Then, from 11:30 to 12:30, we have an hour where people can make some speeches, or maybe talk, and then afterwards, we're gonna have a meet and greet in the Church Haller. And during this meet and greet, which is gonna go from 12:30 to 3:00, we're gonna open the Hatfield 325th time capsule, in addition to having a presentation by Jonathan Martinwell on the church, Congregational Church Bill. So, we will have refreshments, and then the last document in your packet, it's just an overall schedule of events that we have had for some time, and it just tells you what's coming up, and some of the things in terms of the events later on this year. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to, maybe go into any more detail on Incorporation Day if you need it.
I'd just like to add a little bit to that.
Yeah.
We're planning to launch the boat over here on the Hadley side, over on, what is it?
Huntington.
Huntington Road, right?
Okay.
And down where the power lines are, could that directly across, the one we found, that was where they originally launched the boat, originally back in 1670. So, we wanted to try to get exclusive access to that. What we do have to do is find out, there's a gate there, just by, I think, again, so we have to find out if the power company controls that. So, I'll get in touch with Mike Spankville, see if he can help us out there, see what we can do there. So, as far as getting involved with you folks, you can do as much of the gig as you like. Hope you attend and, you know, be part of, since Hadley is our mother company. By the way, I'm originally from Hadley, Lush Street, Middle Street, I'm from Hadley, so...
Everybody crosses the river at some point, you know that, Ed. They either marry, or they do something, right?
Mr. Woodwater just, he'll be useful.
Yes, he did, yes, but he married a Hatfield girl.
Right. And then, well, that's basically what's gonna happen there. From there, we'll go to church, like Sharon said, and then afterwards, on the front lawn, outside the church, we'll do the confirmation readings and so on.
Speeches.
Sharon did a lot of research down in Boston, she got all the official documents that were literally processed back in early days from 1667 to 1670.
I'm sure you know about all the petitions that went back and forth between the east side and the west side inhabitants for 10 years. So, I've done a lot of research, a lot of these petitions and documents will be on display in the Church Haller during the meet and greet, just, you know, to talk about them. And of course, this is the final proclamation, and this, like Ed mentioned, will be read at the end of all the speeches.
And Heather Phil come down and put in instructions. She asked me to group free at the other player, and I'm looking at it, and she's looking at the word, I'm saying, when is something to share the...
And you remember that Mary Lou Cutter, she was, Mary Lou Cutter was under Historical Commission at Hatfield, but she was also a teacher here in Hadley, and she wrote a history book for us, our children, to have over here, so I don't know if you have a copy of that or not.
Oh, yes, we do, oh, yes, we do.
So, we're very happy about that, that she incorporated that also.
Oh, yes, it's definitely in our museum all the time.
So, someone had mentioned to me, of course, in my roundabout way, and of course, I see the boys at Big Y in the morning, they go for coffee from your Hatfield, your Hatfield Boys, and they were mentioning to me about putting a tree from Hadley, and I thought that was a really great idea, of a tree traveling from Hadley to Hatfield to commemorate also the 350th for you. So, I'd like to, you know, endorse us in doing that, and getting a tree, and participating in that event also, would that be good?
Nice, that's excellent.
Thank you.
In your package, you'll probably have a calendar.
Yes.
Okay, I mentioned to David that on the calendar is all our listed events for everything that's going on in Hatfield, that people reported, from school committees functioning straight up until all our functions for the 350th year. We have a summer celebration coming up, I think, in August, and that's on the calendar there, and that's gonna be a great date for kids and adults alike, and Eddie Forman's orchestra will be playing, I think, from 6 to 8, and so, and he'll also be in the parade on a float, and I honestly, I found that out yesterday. We have about 7 to 8 bands that are complimenting Hat, the Hatley for having Hopkins attend, and we just notified the other day with that.
Agreed.
We greatly appreciate that, and look forward to this all, good, thank you. We have you folks and right behind us in line up, okay, so you'll be in and out, okay, so, so to speak.
Yeah.
And you're welcome to be part of the viewing stand afterwards, if you'd like to come back to it, just let us know, and we'll wait and see what happens.
Need someone to paddle the boat? Yeah.
The wood's hard with the boat, back in 1670, the boat fits.
You got your boat there.
You need a historical outfit, I'm hot like that.
Did you guys run away from the Hatley from the east side, or did we push you over to the west side?
What?
Did you run away from the east side, or did we push you over to the west side?
Well, you know, initially, in 1660, 1661, we had some individual who settled on the west side, and I think they just evolved, you know, as per, from everything that I've read. I did wanna mention that once we get the final confirmation from the federal and state elected officials, we will be sending out a formal invitation, so you'll get another invitation with all the final details. I do not think that any of the time schedules will change, but it'll just announce as to the final details as to who's attending from state and federal level.
If, maybe that schedule, we can put on our TV5 or Channel 2.
We'd love to do that for you.
Yeah.
Great, yeah, yeah.
Do you have any questions for us?
No, sounds exciting, and, yeah, we'll be in touch with, you know, where we can, maybe we'll talk as a board and see what we would wanna do, and see where we can participate, so, that sounds exciting.
Great.
We have the parade committee, I met with them last night, night before last, we had two meetings that night, so we went back and forth, but the parade is all set, it's all color-coded where the staging areas are, so what you'll do is when you come into town, you'll have like a, it's a, it's a red thing on your dash, and you'll go in the staging area where it's red, red, whatever they assign you, making it easy, so you know where to go.
Great.
I have all the help. The parade could go anywhere from two to four hours, depending on the situation, I mean, Dave.
Well, we participated in North Hampton, and we're delighted, in Amherst, and we're delighted to participate in Hatfield. I can speak for myself, and I'm sure everybody...
It was a lot of work for ours when we did ours, too.
So, do we need to tell people if they wanna do a float from Hadley, how do you want that to work?
To, you mean to participate, you like the fire department, stuff like that?
Fire department, if people wanna put a float in your parade, or...
Yes, we do, just notify the parade committee, okay? Go online, or call myself, or the town hall, and we'll get right back to you, the people that wanna have a float, and whatever else you wanna have, and then fire trucks, or whatever you're gonna bring, whatever delegation you choose to do. We'll welcome you, and we'll put you in place here.
And just, I wasn't sure with what you were talking, but looking at the schedule, and just for the viewers or whatever, it sounds like the May 31st is the boat crossing, speeches, that kind of thing, and then June 13th is the parade date.
Yes, yes, yes.
Just so everybody knows.
Yeah, 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 I didn't, I was like, are these all happening in one day, or different things? So, yeah, two different days.
That's what I'm saying, the schedule of the events, if we could put it on Channel 5 and...
Yeah, that could help, yeah.
And refresh your memories of times and dates.
Yeah, we do have a big, I'm gonna just step next run, people city on the radio station and so on. We had a very good gala, I don't feel aware, we had some handles over there, and that was an excellent turnout, we sold, we sold out, there's 400 tickets at the lodge, and they were sold out, great event, that was, I kept up. At the end of the event, it's a luminaryum, and that's the Saturday before Christmas, and that will be where we have the lighting booth, candles in town, and we'll have a big fireworks display, and that'll be the end of the celebration. We do have a big birthday cake in the center of town for those of you that went through the town, we've been putting a top on, probably in a week or two, we have a few meters of the top, because Westfield, we left the cake from Westfield, and they kept their top, they did it on it for historical purposes, and we'll do the same, and Wade Lee's looking to buy it from us.
Nice.
Sounds good.
All right.
All right, well, great, thank you very much for coming and presenting to us, and congratulations, and...
For the top.
Great, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we had a adult-use marijuana RFQ for 6:45 this evening. The Town of Hadley has received two submittals in response to our RFQ for retail store dispensing adult-use marijuana. The Board will evaluate each proposal and determine eligibility to obtain the last remaining adult-use marijuana retail establishment. So, we basically have one license out there already for retail marijuana, and a host community agreement with the Arlen Collective, they are on Route 9 near the Amherst Line, and we have one more retail license available in Hadley, so we have two proposals to review that license, and we invited folks here tonight to speak to us about their operations, and then we would potentially be voting to engage one of the operations in a host community agreement negotiation. We could vote to put this on hold and revisit it at a later time, but we wanted to bring everyone in, kind of see what they had to say after reviewing their proposals, and make a decision based on what's happening from there. So, I don't know if the Board has any questions before we invite people to speak, but my thoughts? Nope, okay. So, first one, I'll just go in alphabetical order, is Hatleaf Holistics. They were looking at putting an operation in the Hampshire Mall, and I don't know if somebody's here from Hatleaf that would like to speak. Yeah, would you guys wanna come up and introduce yourselves, or stand, maybe stand up and introduce yourselves, so we could see you? But, go ahead, Doug.
I'm Matthew McTeague, working at the facility, assistant manager.
I'm Andy Weblet, I'll be the owner, and this is Lynn, she's from the mall.
The chairman, the landlord.
Nice, thanks, yeah, yeah.
Well, we brought a couple larger prints for you guys.
Sure.
Hand it out, along with a couple of bullet points on why we feel that, you know, the mall location is a lot more secure than, you know, opposed to another standalone location. 'Cause I know the original one we gave you is kind of small, so I just wanted you guys to be able to read this clearly as far as the layout.
Thank you.
The internal, in-line.
Thank you.
There are two floors in this location, you see the larger sections, you can do the retail entrance, and the storage of product and back, the back door for delivery.
And this would be in what section of the mall?
Down near JCPenney, I believe Lynn has a layout of it. So, did a, kind of, it was a process, because I know there's some concerns, you know, people being able to get in there, so we kind of did a step-by-step...
What building, what part is it?
How the person goes, how people enter the building.
What was, what's the...
So, what proposed location they're looking at opening in is down here in the JCPenney Wing, it's actually a former GNC spa, so it's on the main part of the mall, it's down the wing where Planet Fitness is. So, it's not, I know that there was some confusion about the placement within the center, it's not center court, it's not on the food court, it is down this end of the wing where there is a nail salon, JCPenney, and Planet Fitness, where you have to be 18 or older to attend. Not anymore, the nail salon is there now. Does anybody need a closer peek at the...
I know, that's good.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for me as the landlord? We were very, just, I wanted to add to Matt and Andy, we were very strategic in the placement of where we thought it would be appropriate in the mall, so I just wanted to point that out, we gave it a lot of thought.
Lynn, you banned, it's a tobacco-free mall, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, and somebody was just asking me, like, oh, there's no tobacco with this, but I'm assuming it's because it's not...
We have very strict behavior code, it's posted at all of our entrances, just because you can purchase certain items in the mall, doesn't mean that we condone, as a matter of fact, we prohibit the use of tobacco on property, we prohibit vape pens, we prohibit the use of those things in the common area and in the parking lots, same thing with open containers, same thing with, you know, weapons of any kind, just because you can purchase, you know, certain items at the center, doesn't mean that we want you to be using them at the center, if you will. So, we will continue to enforce, as we always do, our behavior codes through 24-hour security, and just monitoring, monitoring customers and retailers.
And where would the most logical entrance be to get to this location?
Down this wing, right over here, so on the JCPenney side, former Ground Round, for those of us that have been around a long time, that Ground Round entrance would be the best one.
Really bring that back.
I'm trying to, I'm missing, I'm trying.
So, does the mall allow, have any prohibitions against tobacco retailers or alcohol retailers?
You can purchase a beer at Arizona Pizza, you can purchase a beer at Penn's, both are, you know, would be considered family... you know, would be considered family friendly establishments.
But you can't purchase a beer?
But you can't, not currently, no. We're working on that also, concurrently.
Oh, so you, there, there could theoretically be an establishment that sells tobacco of some time.
Within the center that does, theoretically, that is something that we work with our tenants individually on.
They used to sell there, and then they pulled your ability to do that.
I was not here for that, and I'm working to correct that problem. Because, again, just because you can purchase it at the center, doesn't mean that we wouldn't allow you to smoke in the center or do any of those things. We try to be all things for all people, we try to establish, you know, what the consumer and what shoppers are looking for, and this is obviously a use that is creating demand. You know, 20 years ago, you wouldn't have seen trampolines, or go-karts, or, you know, different uses under one roof, and now they are. So we're trying to be, you know, trying to maintain our relevance within the market.
We want to stress this is going to be very discreet. There isn't going to be a big sign in the window, or, the sign itself is going to be very discreet, the windows that might be frosted, and you won't be able to see inside the place. There'll be one door for an exit, one door for entry. When you walk in, there'll be a security guard checking your IDs, you'll need to be buzzed in, and then there'll be all sorts of educational material that will introduce you to, then another security guard will take you to the cashier. The cashier will take your ID again, there'll be a seat to sale, POS type system, it's going to more or less be able to track the amount of product that people buy. So we'll be able to basically limit, limit, limit the amount that they purchase, or not sell too much. Then once they're done, there'll be another exit door, they'll need to be buzzed out, and then they exit, but it's going to be very discreet. I think one of the concerns might have been that there's a lot of like kids in the mall, but they won't, but it'll be at the end of the mall where, I'm kind of nervous. It'll be at the end of the mall where the kids really, really aren't there, it'll be discreet, there aren't, there won't be all sorts of signs, like we're selling bud or pot, so it's not, it's not getting anything visible. Even when you walk into the place, basically, all the product's going to be underneath the counter, there's going to be nothing visible at all. We feel that the mall would be a pretty good location, because lots of ample parking, separate entrances, you know, some of the facilities that I've visited, there's lots of traffic, and a lot of authorities need to get, need to like start, sorry, the police officers need to like start monitoring the traffic and in and out, and it creates all sorts of congestion. So I really think that the mall is a perfect location, because there's lots of parking, there's lots of security, you got the mall's security, you got our security. And as far as, you know, kids, I want to make the comparison to like alcohol and like marijuana. Like, when people walk, when people walk in, when people walk into a package store and buy alcohol, a lot of times, a lot of times, somebody like myself might die and be carded. So, a lot of people, you can walk in, not be carded, but this is going to be like very, very strict. The guidelines for us are going to be very tough, because every single person's going to need to be carded, their ID's going to be tracked, their information's going to go to database, even the state will be able to monitor us, if there's, if product is disappearing, which won't be disappearing, because, like I said, they have a seat to sale, POS type system, and they could easily come and audit us and say, hey, we sold you this much product, where is it? It's kind of like the alcohol industry, where you have to buy from specific vendors, you can't just buy it from wherever, and the state can easily audit you on that as well. So it'll, it'll be, it'll be tracked, heavily regulated. It's actually a lot easier for somebody to walk into a package store for a minor and purchase alcohol versus like a facility like this. It'll be virtually impossible for a minor or somebody to walk in and buy marijuana type products. But I just want to stress that even though we might be kind of pioneers of the fact that we're trying to do it in the mall, I think it's a really discreet location, because it's not wide and open, it's not on a main road, it's not a freestanding building, we're not putting signage over the building that says we're selling marijuana. Like I said, it'll be very, very discreet.
We, yeah, we, just a couple on what Andy is saying, we consider the infrastructure as part of our negotiations, that that was something that we felt we could accommodate. Like he said, ample parking, ease in access in and out of the property, you know, from a traffic standpoint, and 24-hour security, and well lit, all of those things, we felt like it was appropriate.
Has the, have the police department been consulted at all, just about your security plan?
Not at this point.
Once we get, what, our security plan, before we designed it, we definitely, we'd have to meet with the police and see what works for them, and what kind of custom tailor it to them.
And I just had a question, kind of on your business, just because it was different than the other operations I've seen, it seems like you don't have your own grow facility or anything like that, you'd be buying from another person that's growing, I'm assuming like a wholesaler, and then going to them, and then selling their products, so to speak. You know, and in lack of better words, just kind of buying wholesale, selling retail, I guess.
You go into a designated person.
Yeah.
Or a company within the state that sells the product, exactly like the liquor industry.
Yeah, yeah.
You have to go to specific vendors, buy it from them, everything's monitored, so.
But what, what are your products? I'm very naive, I don't use, I don't know what you got. So I'd like a description of what type of products. If you go into your facility, and you can't see anything, and they're all under the counter, what do you have a list of what's available?
There'll be a menu.
A menu?
You have, you love a menu? You walk into a place, you'll have a menu, it'll even be on the flat screen TVs. Products, why don't you elaborate here?
So, right now, you know, the product's kind of limited, with Massachusetts still being new to getting things going, I'm sure you've seen on the news, all the issues they're having with the CCC and approvals and all that stuff. So it's really, you know, you have some standard, small edibles, gummies, gel caps, tinctures. I believe they allowed the vape cartridges back again now, for the marijuana only. Then you have the flower pre-rolled joints, and that's pretty much what it is right now. As the market grows, I'm sure we'll see a lot more different varieties of edibles, you also, you know, some of the concentrates, like the shatter and the wax, which is a, you know, like a highly concentrated.
Do we take prescriptions?
Would we be taking prescriptions? No, we're not going to be in medical marijuana facilities, recreational only. So, you know, as product availability grows, we'll be bringing in, you know, what's out there on the market, with the manufacturers supplying.
You guys have any other questions, or?
I'm just, I'm just curious, a question for Lynn, I guess, have any of the other existing tenants in the building expressed any concern to you, or?
Not at this point, we have been in the very preliminary stages. As the landlord, we condone the use, but we've not consulted with our tenants, we generally don't. What we try to do is complement the existing mix, and then as, you know, property owners try to be strategic with the placement of said operations, but we don't typically consult the tenants for, for that type of operation.
I just didn't know, like JCPenney, or Planet Fitness, or anybody.
No, there are provisions in their lease that, you know, would limit, you know, manufacturing or certain types of uses, that we have agreements with those, with those companies, but for this particular use, it's retail, it's going to be allowed.
Is there a possibility to put an exterior door, where all the customers would access the retail store through the outside of the mall versus the interior?
I mean, I guess that would be a design thing that we would work with the owners on, it does have an exterior wall, and there is currently an exterior door. It was used primarily for deliveries, but I imagine we would need to go to the planning board to identify that as now a customer entrance. There had been one in the past in that area already for the bank that you mentioned, in that general area, so it's not unheard of, and it is, you know, it's very comfortable and, you know, customer friendly already, because it was, at one point in time, an area where customers would go in and out of some of those areas.
But as a landlord, do you have the issue of working that exterior door?
No, we wouldn't be opposed to it, I think the intent would be the visibility that the interior of the property for their benefit is, is there, and for ours as well, for customer comfort levels, you know.
I'm not sure, I'm just kind of how it looks on the outside, you know, very discreet. There's also another gate that drops down in the front at night, you know.
Customers prefer an enclosed, you know, climate controlled shopping environment, so I would say that our preference would be that, but if it was, if it was, you know, something we needed to consider, we would obviously discuss that.
Do you have another facility somewhere else?
No, we don't.
This is your first.
This is the first one. We have, we have, the first one's going to be my manager opened up, what do you call it?
Medical marijuana?
Medical marijuana, in, in Arlington, Connecticut. And they since sold their share out, but they will be coming in to manage and train and sort of hiring, and, you know, they're bringing in all their experience into our store. So we do come with a lot of experience, and the medical, the medical marijuana, the way, when they got their licenses, and their standards are far higher than recreational.
Is there a real setting, or is it standalone, sort of, that you have experienced so far?
What was that?
Was it in another mall?
Standalones, or a mall type setting?
I've seen standalones, but honestly, I really feel that, I know it's inside a mall, and I know there might be, some people might have problems with that, but I think it's far more discreet inside of a mall. I think, like I said, it's not on a main road, it's not causing congestion, the facility of the mall is completely set up to, to basically service this type, this type of business. I think it's a be a win-win for everybody. Win-win for the mall, win-win for, for tax, tax type revenue, win-win for us.
They're exploring the use in our port podium and other centers where it's allowed, where it's permissible.
Great. Anything else? That's good. All right, well, thank you. Because I need to ask, and then we have our next possible establishment, is Mint Retail.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, lucky member of the military, my name is Jim Bolarianni with the Menzies Law Group. We are the law firm assisting the Mint Retail Company with their various facilities that are currently under pursuit here in Massachusetts, including here in Hadley. With me tonight is Ivan Shahara, from the company's president and founder, who flew into Bradley International at 4 o'clock today to be here.
A little jet lagged, but.
Thanks for coming.
So I want to thank you guys.
Arizona?
Yeah. I want to thank you for your time and consideration in our application, look forward to being a partner in the community, and bringing our expertise and professionalism to the task.
Yes, our facility, as we presented, at 397 Russell Street, a standalone, currently an auto shop and Midas chain. These are the type of standalone shops that Mint targets, Ivan likes to be able to do a concrete standalone facility, with full control of the lot, which we will have under our contract to acquire the property, which has been executed. We do have typical contingencies, of course, permitting and what have you. Parking is adequate for that facility, we need to have twice the parking area to the footprint of the building, we have that. I do have a sketch that I pulled from the registry website, I don't have many of these, but they do show at least a rough view of that.
We will provide proper site plans and.
And there is a bird's eye view. So although there are some wetlands, some, of course, quite a few wetlands in the town, there are some wetland dangers nearby, nearby all the properties in that area. We are not going to break any ground, there is no need to expand that building, we'll be sealing up the bays, and that will allow for parking in front of the building, there is a knee breast, an ingress and a knee breast way already off of Budland, Russell Street. It will be highly secured, we have a very elaborate and well-tested security plan that we presented to the police departments, that is a very important part of obtaining the host community agreement, meeting, of course, would, would come before the host agreement being signed by the town. And the licensing procedure with the state is very strict, and we've been through that with a number of clients, and we're working with Mint on cultivation facility in the town of Palmer, which is going to be filed first thing tomorrow. So, facilities in, I believe for cultivation and retail, Pittsfield for retail, and facilities that are being pursued elsewhere in the country as well by Mint. Very good staff, a very well experienced staff. And again, I don't have many extra proposals, but you should have had submitted color copies of the conceptual design that Mint is seeking to achieve in uniformity, just to, one moment, as well as the floor plan, again, a very.
Page 10, is that it?
Yes, thank you. You know, my proposal better than that. But you see a similar on page eight, a very similar conversion as to what we're seeking to achieve at 397 Russell, a former garage facility converted to a Mint retail dispensary. And this is what we're presenting in other towns as well. In some instances, a gabled roof to, that's what's sought by the applicable boards, planning, zoning, selectmen, we can do a gabled roof for a New England facade type finish.
Yeah.
So we have shown that in some of the materials we submitted in our request, the material of the store, waiting area, as you can see, the materials, and again, you should have all received these in the conceptual plans we are presenting.
Yep.
And our floor plan, very uniform for the Mint chain. Very, well-planned security for these facilities, very adaptive, the security lighting, the downcast lighting, you have the building, of course, nothing can be displayed from the street or the parking area, so that, there can be some signs to identify the property and the type of use, but a very tasteful signage, and no product will be visible as required by the general check and 94G.
Yeah.
And I don't know what else to present, we're not concerned about any wetlands, if there are, that's a very common undertaking, permitting undertaking to manage, we can certainly do erosion control, sedimentation control around the perimeter of the building during the renovation.
How many other locations do you have? We currently have two operating in Arizona, and we're vertical, so cultivation, processing, manufacturing, and retail, several sites in Michigan that are approved, one of which they'll open hopefully this month, and we're pursuing our third location here in Massachusetts, the max allows three, so we're hoping that this will be better. And I'm sorry, but just recently I got a order by since, I'm sorry.
Do you, since you have facilities operating, you kind of know what the market is?
Correct.
Do you see any issues with market saturation with three facilities within the two mile radius?
So to give you an idea, our Tempe location, there are eight retail facilities, we're going to find more of those. And then because of the product knowledge, the way we train our bartenders, if you will, the type of products that we have, the variety of products that we have, we've been able to stable the competition and make sure that we get people coming in and serving properly. And answer some of your concerns on products in this market, until our facilities are up and going, we have created relationships with our current manufacturers here, Siri Naturals, they're actually a multi-state operator, we have dealings with them in other states, they just expanded their facility, 60,000 square feet for cultivation, so we're going to be buying products from them.
Where's the?
So they have three retail facilities, Somerville, Cambridge, and another one, and there are production facilities somewhere in the center of this, not sure exactly where but.
And you are a facility in Palmer, you're going through that tomorrow?
Cultivation is being filed.
Cultivation?
Yes. We also have a vertical site in Bentley, so it's going to be a retail, manufacturing, and cultivation.
And why did you choose this area?
Um. Um, we like dealing with smaller towns. You have a better relationship. We feel we can walk in and have a conversation with somebody as opposed to bigger towns where you walk in and you'll never get a real conversation.
The five college area was a draw.
Um, that is.
We are pursuing a retail facility in a metropolitan community as well right now. You're not far enough along, but I can attest to the.
And the products would be the same as the other facility, or do you have any other products that you would be selling?
We do. So we have some more that are dedicated to medical. So some tinctures, some patches to also give the medical patients what they need. But we will be manufacturing our own edibles, cultivating our own flour, as well as different hospital rooms.
And would this facility be medical as well as adult use, or is it just adult use?
Just.
Yeah, just adult use here in Halloway.
There's scripts there.
Yeah, yeah. I just was confirming it.
But medical patients can obviously walk into a retail store. We want to have the adequate products for everybody.
When you reviewed the, so basically David and you?
Yeah.
When you did your initial review in terms of the RFP requirements, both, both parties meet the requirements, all of that's embedded?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, from the building commissioner's perspective and, you know, any zoning restrictions, there was nothing that was identified in our screening that raised any red flags. That's kind of why we're here tonight is kind of figuring out, you know, both proposals are adequate in the eyes of.
On paper, it's a whole.
Yeah, yeah.
And including our, our, uh, community impact fee is, is highest amount that can be arranged under the host community agreement process, three percent of the gross revenue per year, total five years. We are strict compliance with that being maximum. Very good. Anything else?
Yeah. I don't have any more questions. Do you have any more questions?
Anything else, Mr. Harman, before he heads back? Are you going to Missouri after this or going back to Arizona?
No, I see it.
That is probably.
Oh, yeah. Are there any comments from the audience? Anybody? We did invite some, some things out there for public comment. I don't know if anybody's here for that.
I have one. I have one in relationship to you folks. I have our office manager actually, her son races at the mall. He also races at Stafford. She's very concerned about having the stuff in a mall. It's, it's just, I think that it's not a wonderful idea. You've got kids all around that mall. Where do they go on vacations? Where do they go Friday nights, Saturday nights? There's a lot of things. You've got skating there, you've got laser tag. Don't you think that these kids don't, I mean, my kid's old enough. I mean, she's already 20. So she better know better. But these kids.
What exactly is your concern? Is your concern them going in, going into the facility and purchasing something, or the visibility? What exactly is the concern?
I don't think it's a good idea to have, to have a place like this where the kids congregate. I really don't, I don't think it's appropriate. If it's down the road or somewhere away from there, that's a different situation. But kids know what's going on.
I think they'll see it on the street, lots of northern Golden Mall, but Lynn, you want to like, we talked about this a little bit. It's located in a part of the mall where.
I know where it is, the ground room, the old ground room.
It's towards, it's towards the end.
The GNC.
We work with the mall and.
Away from those facilities.
I know this. I've been here since 1988. I'm very familiar with the.
Alright, thank you. I think that's good. Thank you both for your comments. Is anyone else here from the, for a public comment? Alright, so we have a decision in front of us. I don't know if we want to think about it a little bit, if we want to.
I'd like to postpone it because I'm sure there's gonna be more public comment and I'd like to hear the input from the public. I myself feel exactly like she does. The malls went through and no smoking. It attracts a lot of kids, young adults and underage kids. And I just don't feel like that's the place to put it, you know?
Anyone else have any thoughts?
I think you, I think you all know how I feel about it anyway. I don't need to go into that tonight.
It's legal and it's here.
It's legal and it's here. I'm an old nurse and I work in an office where I have to queue up some narcotic prescriptions and a lot of this starts with this. So, you know, that's my take out of what I'm open-minded, so.
David, do we have any?
Yeah, and I think it would be, in a situation like this, it's helpful to kind of think through the criteria, you know, that we should be making a judgment on. And I think I'd like to get the police chief's opinion too. On the one hand, intellectually, I do understand the argument that in a way the mall has more security than the standalone. You know, certainly understand the issues.
You have police chief, you have fire, you have building inspectors, so they all should chime in on it before we make a decision.
Yeah, I would definitely like to hear that.
The public and, and our officials, yeah.
But having said that, I think we should, in the, in the spirit of fair play, we should try to make decisions quickly as we can.
Do we have a meeting next week or?
Uh, two weeks.
Two weeks.
March 18th. So we could, we could bring, put it back on the agenda for that and, and try to come to a decision at that time.
Like, is this two weeks for public comments?
Yeah, hear from the community.
I think that's fair with you two that are interested in it.
Yes, of course. If I may though, there's nothing else you require of the proposals at this moment in time?
I don't think so. I mean, I think there's a possibility that questions may come up in the process, especially if there's public, more public input. And so in that case, I think we would need to coordinate to make sure that both parties have the opportunity to respond to that kind of thing.
The administrator's got your numbers anyway, so as questions come in, we can contact the both of you.
Most likely. And we'll keep our eyes on your agenda postings and perhaps stay in touch with the town administrator's office and perhaps be back here on the 18th.
We'll put it on the agenda for next, the next meeting, which is the 18th. And we'll try to do a similar time to do it, you know, first thing.
Very good.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you all. Thank you all for coming and presenting to us and applying as well. Thank you for coming to have.
Good evening.
Yeah, thank you.
Or if anybody wants to come to Arizona.
Relatives's out there.
Perfect weather right now.
Okay, so we have two new committees that I would like to suggest that the select board give, give approval to. There are two committees. We can start with the Housing and Economic Development Committee. We just met tonight, but, sorry, pulling up my document here. But this committee would be basically looking as an advisory committee to the select board. We have two people that are interested in co-chairing the committee, one of them being Molly, another one being Dylan Mans. We have several members already on the committee. It would be a mixed committee with representation from both the select board and the planning board, and up to nine members from the community. This would be identifying the current inventory of housing in Hadley, exploring resources available to build new affordable housing, improve the quality of existing housing throughout the community, explore exclusionary landies practices that inhibit development of new affordable housing near transient jobs, working with neighboring universities to quantify the need for student housing, identifying possible areas where future development and community central social district enhancement is possible, identifying alternative zoning and uses while continuing to boost up Hadley's agricultural heritage, and partner with outside organizations to form strategic plans and support entrepreneurial efforts. And to sum all that up is basically, you know, we've heard a lot in the community that there isn't a place for starting families to afford a house in Hadley. It affects our school systems. It affects our tax revenue, our infrastructure. This is a way to kind of enhance that and try to find ways that Hadley can digest that would enhance our development and our future. So that is one committee. I don't know if you guys have any questions.
The other point I think that should be made is the intent. This would be an advisory committee. The committee would be doing a lot of legwork that the select board and planning board might not otherwise have the opportunity to do. And, you know, right now, Bill Dwyer from the planning board is participating. So that would also kind of afford an opportunity for some more cohesiveness between the planning board and the select board that we've struggled a little bit in the past by having representation from both of the.
Yeah, I could really, I feel like partner on some projects and gain some common knowledge, speak the same language and work together on a lot of these issues. So it can be valuable.
Are you going to be able to do this, Molly, after your cross board?
Oh, yes. I should have more time.
Just wanted to ask you.
So what's gonna be kind of the committee's first goal, or first, what's your, what's your package?
The first thing would be basically, actually Haley is here tonight. We are gonna meet with her maybe because she has some experience in this realm and other towns, not to put you on the spot, but your name was ringing tonight. We thought we'd meet with you. But also Amy Fiden is also interested in being on this committee. She sits on the Valley CDC and we're thinking of trying to meet some with them as well to just talk to them about their experience with projects in Amherst and Northampton. And just kind of, I think the first goal is trying to gain some more knowledge on the committee and try, gain some understanding and then start going from there. There's also some cross collaboration with what's happening with the Russell School right now. So that, that future is to be determined. And this would kind of help educate us all in getting to do some other things in town.
Working in conjunction with the master building.
Well, yeah, the planning board would be on it, so.
Right.
Oh, municipal building committee.
Municipal building. Dylan Mans is on, so, so, yeah, there's some, there's some crossover going on here. I mean, right now, the, the people that expressed an interest from day one.
Oh, yeah.
So it's Emma Dragon, Sean Berry, Bill Dwyer, Christian, Amy Fiden, me, Dylan Mans is also a new member of the finance committee and Russell School Committee, Mark Howard and Joanne Hatton, who's actually the more of the senior.
Make a motion to establish the economic development committee and appoint those members that are listed there.
Second.
Great.
For two years.
Yeah, we, we're looking at a two-year term.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Aye.
Yeah, it was actually. Well, I don't know how we're gonna do with a planner. We're still got that in order.
We're hoping the planner would be part of this committee as well. But we didn't mention that because we don't have a planner yet.
There's a lot of open ends that.
Yeah, I mean, we need somebody in town to be able to drive things forward too. That's always the thing. So having a planner be able to do that would be great. And then my second committee is the Hadley Climate Committee. Right now, there's interest from Jack Sekowski to be chair. Jean, Jeannie Armstrong, who was here several weeks ago talking about this. Secretary, that's still to be, to be determined. Somebody decided to step, step away from the committee today, but I would be the select board liaison. And then Stephen Armstrong, Michael Doctor, and Joanne Goading would also be on this committee. And this is, this one has, we're thinking, you know, climate change here in Hadley, but I think this one is a little bit more mission-driven in the sense that we want to look at the current ecological footprint of the town, look at information about potential actions the town can take to reduce that footprint, and then help to the town evaluate, choose and implement actions that promote sustainable practices, and over time monitor changes in the town's ecological footprint. So one of the major near-term goals of this is to look at all the utility usage in town and put a number to that carbon footprint, and then be able to look at our historical usage of that and then kind of track it moving forward. And if there's any recommendations we could make to reduce that. So it's, it's pretty simple. There could be broader visions here and other side things to go, but trying to keep it kind of focused in that realm right now. And this is a group that's excited to work on that type of project. And I think, you know, maybe making this even just a one-year committee and looking at it into the future would be good, because it kind of has some goals right now and evolving it if it, if it so desires.
Would you, would you also imagine that this committee might, there might be some crossover with like the shade tree committee? You know, I'm thinking about, like, there's a movement right now in terms of promoting rain barrels and pollinator gardens and things like that, you know, planting more trees.
There could be. And that was a lot of the talk that when we've met is, I think this is something that kind of needs to spread amongst other committees that are already in town and kind of come together. So municipal building committee should be part of this. Jack was at the municipal, last municipal building committee meeting to talk to them about it. So.
And the girl, was it Markowski, right?
Oh, yeah, the Lord Communities.
She came in and did the presentation.
Yeah, I'd love to get some student involvement in this too, because I think that it, I was working earlier on in the year with Ann McKenzie. There was a lot of excitement in the schools about this climate topic. And I would love to get some younger people involved in this and a way for them to also get involved in the town.
We're way past climate control with 40,000 cars a day going through.
Yeah. Easy pass. Just set up one of those bars.
Take the vote over.
I'll make a motion that we, I'll say for a two-year period, just let that one and appoint these volunteers.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
You just wanted to fill out your schedule now that the senior center's winding down.
Yeah, 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 you know.
So bored.
Got nothing to do. Alright, let's, let's enjoy a little presentation here. Enterprise Fund Administrative Charges. Linda and David have joined us tonight to talk about this controversial topic about the, the administrative charges from enterprise funds and trying to make this yearly budget calculation a little more transparent, a little more clear for people to be able to figure out where all the numbers come from. We have some great goals of trying to make these enterprise funds more solvent and yet still be fair in their, their impact on the town, broader government structure. So with that, David?
Okay.
So I'll hand it over to you.
So we've had an administrative charges associated with the three enterprise funds for many years. Put together a thorough formula and there's been a number of concerns raised. So the select board has asked me to.
No big deal goes on.
Select board asked me to recalculate the administrative charges. Linda Sanderson, she's in the room, deserves, there you are, deserves an enormous amount of credit for going through the numbers. So we have three enterprise funds, Sewer, Water, and Hadley Media. They're governed by Mass General law chapter 44, section 53F and one and a half. There's a link to the Department of Revenue Guidebook for enterprise funds. Purpose of administrative charges is to apportion hidden costs to taxpayers back to each enterprise fund so that there are no hidden taxpayer costs. And so in 2013, we adopted a unified formula that was transparent, rational, comprehensive, fair, and supported by a document methodology. By the way, if anybody wants a handout, they're on the table. Formula was used from 2013 to 2020 when the board requested the formula be revisited and the town administrator treasure recalculated formula, which is presented here for expression. which is presented here for expression. The current formula, the one that we're using right now in this current fiscal year, requires three to four people to assemble. Its preparation is restricted to no earlier than January, February for the data to be available. And, but the, the good thing is that the charges that are calculated are actually based on actual data. The proposed formula can be completed much more quickly by two people, can be calculated at any time after the end of the fiscal year and again very quickly. And results in charges that are based upon not actuals but estimates and averages. It does result in a reduction of money from the enterprise funds to the general fund for this coming fiscal year of $109,000. So there's a trade-off there. Takes some pressure off of the enterprise fund in terms of insolvency, but it does mean that the general fund is shy $109,000. Let's just watch for all three. That's combined. I don't know if I can.
Pass the handout.
All right, so the first part, Enterprise Fund Indirect Costs, okay, salaries. Salaries for procurement, Town Administrator, Accounting, Treasurer's Department, Human Resources and Building Maintenance. An amount is calculated, there are $319,000. And I think I need my own handout here, so let me see the numbers. $319,000. And then that's compared to the Water Department salaries, the salaries for the Sewer Department and then for Hadley Media. And percentages are arrived in the box on the right-hand side. The calculations are done. The $319,000 is multiplied by the 3.3%, 2.8% and 0.1% for the three enterprise funds. And then there's an amount that's captured in there. So that's the first calculation.
David, before we go on, because this is one that might be revisited, can I just smile a little bit more?
I'll come, I'll come back.
You'll come back to it?
So A2, the Enterprise Indirect Costs for the Collector's Office. You remember the lineup of the carbon silk and the salaries we're calculating. We left out the Collector's Office because the Collector's Office is very heavily engaged in supporting water and sewer and not at all engaged in supporting Hadley Media. So in addition to the salaries, we have to think about the amount of bills that are associated with water and sewer at 50 cents each. And it comes up to a percentage for just the Collectors. 22%, 0.8% for water, 10.05% for sewer. And Hadley Media, again, she does nothing to support that, so there's no cost there. So that's an additional salary indirect cost that has to be added into the calculations. A3, Enterprise Fund Indirect Costs for Benefits for Town Hall Staff. So here's one of the first estimates. So we take all the benefits associated with Town Hall staff, retirement, workers' comp, unemployment, health insurance, and we come up with an average cost per employee, which is 25 and 1/2%. So if you're going to hire somebody at $50,000, you have to add 125.5% to cover the salary. So that's the, that's the average here. Again, these are run for the three enterprise funds in the right-hand box are the final calculations.
That's all departments though, not just Town Hall?
That's right. All right, Town Hall Expenses. So we've dealt with the salary, now there's the expenses. So we put together the expenses for the procurement and Select Board, Town Administrator, Accounting Department, Treasurer Department, Collector, Legal, Human Resources, Insurance, Town Hall and Building Maintenance for Town Hall only. And you come up with $423,000 and change. Compare that to the expenses for Water, Sewer and Hadley and come up with percentages. 7.8% for Water, 5.9% for Sewer and 1/2% for Hadley Media. You run these together on the right-hand box. And we make a special adjustment for Hadley Media because they are housed in the library. So there's $7,167 of library expenses that has to be apportioned to Hadley Media. Then we have a total of all the indirect costs. So A-1, A-2, A-3 and A-4 comes up with a subtotal for the indirect salary, Collector's expenses and benefits for each enterprise fund. The next part of the formula goes back to the average of 25 and 1/2% per employee for benefits. And we, rather than calculating out the actual benefits for, for the Water and Sewer Departments, we're just using the average of 25 and 1/2% and that achieves this calculation.
And David, I'm assuming the point there is that in the spirit of consistency, that those people change their benefit packages and everything, you're not tying yourself into it, not trying to figure out every year who's taking what.
Right, that was, that was a major source of labor that we needed to utilize, actual data. We also had a HIPAA concern in that some of these enterprise funds have so few employees that we were in danger of revealing information about health insurance that would have been possible violation of HIPAA rules. So by using the averages, we can get away from that concern. Then we have the unfunded liabilities. The first one is the OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits. We take the total of the OPEB liability payment of $263,000. We run that through the total salaries. We've come up with percentages for Water, Sewer and Hadley Media. And the first box to the right shows the final calculation for the enterprise fund's contribution to the OPEB liability payment. The second one is the Retirement Contribution. And I guess this falls under the category of careful what you wish for. As we were diving into the numbers, it became clear that the general fund has been funding 100% of the total retirement liability for years and years and years, and the enterprise funds have not. And it became increasingly obvious that for a fair and transparent and rational system of apportioning hidden costs that we needed to start accounting for the retirement liability payment. We have a figure there of $74,000, which is labeled Total Retirement Liability Payment. That actually is an incorrect label. That is the increase in the liability from one year to the next. If we were to use the total liability, we'd be using a number of $979,000, which would increase the assessment to the three enterprise funds by $57,000. The town is just beginning to look at the retirement liability. It seemed fair that, given that we're focused enough, the incremental increase from one year to the next, that we use a $74,000 figure rather than the total. And there we are at the end. Grand total is A plus B plus C. And we come up with a grand total of $323,000.
And how does that compare to the old method?
That's $109,000 less.
Just so people at home that are watching can be clear, the $109,000 is basically us paying ourselves for services in various departments.
Right.
We're not really losing that $109,000 with the tax money.
Right, right, right. So we ran, we ran this calculation by the financial management team. Linda was there, Christian, you were there, Ed, you were there. And there were a number of suggestions. One suggestion was to modify this formula by taking out the school salaries and expenses. If we did that, that would add another $37,000 into the transfer between the enterprise funds and the general fund. The other?
Why would you take the schools out?
That was my suggestion. I think that if you look at these percentages, if we go to the slide A1, if you look at, we have total salaries, $10 million in the town, right? It's saying, but that's, in my mind, what we're looking at there is how much of Town Hall time is spent on these, these enterprise funds. So if you think about how much time Town Hall, as a functional body, spends on the schools, is that 50% of Town Hall's time? In comparison to 3% for water, 3% for sewer and 0.17% for Hadley Media.
Yeah, but isn't that all factored into the net school spending formula? Isn't there, there's a whole nother formula where you take?
All I'm saying is, we're looking at Town Hall, the impact of these enterprise funds on Town Hall.
Are we? Are we looking at a budget?
You're looking at the budget overall. You've got the schools added in there, all the staff at Town Hall, total expenses.
But we're looking at Town, this A1, Enterprise Fund Indirect Costs, salaries. That's the salaries, the contribution of these funds on the salaries of people in Town Hall. So we're looking 319, 763, we're multiplying all these percentages by. It's what we're including, what these percentages are calculated by this total number, which includes the schools. So this is the amount of time, in my mind, that Town Hall spends, this percent, the amount of time Town Hall spends on these different departments. And so that's all the time the Town Administrator spends, all the time procurement spends, all the time Accounting and Treasurer Department, Human Resources. You know, Human Resources, when somebody wants to hire a new teacher at the school, they're not coming to Ed to hire that teacher. They are doing payroll and different things, but they aren't necessarily using that function as much as the DPW and Hadley Media would.
Sure, but would there be like the employee benefits and all that?
I know, but it just seemed like to me that, that, that if you look at it the other way and put the school on here, then 50% of all these things would be, would be, 50% of everyone in Town Hall's time would be spent on the schools. If we broke it down this way.
No, I, I understand.
Losing you or?
No, I understand the argument.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking, part of the reason we're doing this is to try to simplify it. And I just worry is, you know, what if we have shared services with the schools at some point? Are we going to keep coming back and they're doing their own accounting now? So they're running their accounting now through our accounting.
Instead of having a new, we're on the, we are supposed to be on the new method. We're not quite up and running yet with the new firm.
The administration, we assist them with their union contracts as well. We sit at the table and.
That's true. I mean, I'm not saying that it's, they don't spend any time.
When you dig into it, it actually builds up.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if you looked at the percentage of time.
If we removed that amount of salaries, wouldn't that drastically increase the?
It would increase about $37,000.
Right. Because all the salaries are gone, so now it's taking up theoretically much more of Town Hall's time than including those salaries.
Right, that, that, the percentages come up by, the total salaries is the denominator.
Right.
So Christian's saying, well, when we look at it, we say, well, what percentage of total Town salaries is the Water Department, is the Sewer Department? So there's no problem coming up of the numerator because those are your own salaries. So what are we dividing it by, total of Town salaries? And that's, that's how we're getting there. And if you use total Town salaries without the school, instead of being 10,000, it's now 4,000 because they're about 60%. Because I think we estimated the other day at the meeting of data about 50%, but they're actually more like 60% of it. So that's another way of getting it so that perhaps, for one example, if it, using Christian's suggestion, Water Department salaries would be considered 8.4% of the total. As opposed to here is 3.39. And Christian's saying, well, really, probably it's a better approximation of the actual, actual usage of Town Hall hours than the other. So it's another, another way of doing it. But we can't, when it comes to estimating the, we want to figure out what percentage of the total salaries are benefits. We have to, that's how we ended up, but that's how we started using.
You have to, then you have to.
We use the full amount there.
No, 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 but OPEB wouldn't be included because that is town-wide.
Right, right. Anything related to benefits is.
It's only this section.
Only this, only A1.
It's only this one section. Everything else is, in my mind, completely fair because it divvies it up. It's OPEB, it's insurance, it's benefits, and that does cover every employee in town. It's only right here where this is kind of narrowing in on how much of Town Hall, as a body's, time is spent on these enterprise funds.
So, I don't know, I just.
Yeah, I, I give you an argument.
Only because we've been arguing about this for so many years. And I can see if, if we introduce another variable, then somebody's going to come to the table and say, wait a minute, all of the borrowing that the Treasurer's Department did this year happened to be for the schools. So why, why aren't we doing, you know, where another year is going to be all sewer.
There you go.
And I, I'm just afraid we're going to wind up going back to where we were.
This is something we can review whenever we want, right? As far as the chargeback form?
Actually, we've got a library that we're building, we've got a senior center that we're building and we've got a fire station.
No, no, I was just.
That's taken up 99% of the Town Hall time in the last two years.
But that, that's my point. So at any, any given point in time, as these different projects roll through, somebody could be at the table making an argument, no, no, not this year. This year we need to change the formula because, and I think we want to get away from all of that.
I think this is good to at least give it a try for what, headline 22, is it the effect for?
One more argument on this is, we're dropping this fee, this chargeback by $109,000. That's a lot to drop in one year.
We're going to take it out of your salary.
Yeah, take it out of my salary, but that's the difference between having a full-time and a part-time planner. That is a significant drop. And I feel like just taking that big of a chunk out in one year, defining the formula, has a pretty big impact on our overall budget where we're scraping by in other areas. I'm not saying it's right. There's an argument for just doing it this way and sticking to it, but it is a, a big chunk out of our budget we're taking out by losing this money. And what, what do we, we're kind of, we are robbing Peter to pay Paul in this circumstance a little bit. And it's, it's, it's a tricky one, it's a tricky hurdle.
We did, we did that originally when we went from funding it out of general government to funding it out of the enterprise funds. And that's the whole point. This is, this is the question I have.
Part of the problem is the enterprise, the enterprise funds are in much worse shape than.
I know.
The town has.
It's tricky, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's definitely a balancing.
I mean, we, we are boosting them up with this for sure. I mean, there's the alternate argument side of it.
We can phase it in, we can do an incremental approach to it and cut it, cut this decrease in half or something like that and do a lesser amount, David, for the first year and then jump to this one for the next year. Is that?
Could we do that and ask the accountant to smell this?
Yes, I think the rational and transparent way for that would be to take a look at the unfunded pension liability and, and say that we're going to, we're going to start apportioning a higher amount than we currently are. Mind you, we started at zero, now we're just looking at one-year increase.
Yeah.
So you can, you can do that, you can take a look at it. Couple of things to, to just point out is that. Couple of things to, to just point out is that one of the concerns by the SLI board is that, under the old formulas, some of the fund, the source numbers were not as transparent as people would have liked. Linda's been able to type every single number into a BIDAR report, so we can address that.
I know, I know, I know you can look at this for the first time and say, this is simple. And actually, there are only so many inputs, yeah. Actually...
I was going to make that comment.
It's important to be aware of it. Because it is, there are those formulas, but coming up with a formula is one thing, and then coming up the figures that went in is another, and we had to get certain figures from the accountant. And then we had what's now HR, Joe would spend a lot of time figuring out, okay, now which employee, okay, and what are their, what are their insurance? And then adjusting the figures, so during a particular budget year, we might be changing that figure two or three times. We're trying to keep up, we're trying to keep up with real figures, current figures. And then there would be some lopsided things happening, such as, let's say you have one person in Town Hall going onto a family plan or coming off of a planning, family plan, oh, family plan, a family plan. And it would make a big difference, all of a sudden, we're charging water more for a Town Hall employee. So that's why we wanted to use this, this rate. So we needed then the figures to come from one place once a year. And at this point, actually, we don't even require HR anymore. We print out the BIDAR reports, all total salaries, total benefits, total expenses. You take this figure and this figure and you put them into the, into the formula. So if someone walked in from sewer department and said, what's, where'd these come from? I go, okay, here's our four reports, here they are. And the year they are, is the most recent closed one. We're using fiscal nineteen, because that's the closed year. That's it. We have actual figures, we're not using budgeted figures, and we're not using figures that are changing during the year. We're using the last actual figures. And some things might change, such as we add HR department, we switch our accounting, we do various things. That'll come out, because it, because the next year you're going to be using the next year. So it'll, it'll work out. So that's it, basically. David and I can, now, now, once we've spent months coming up with the spreadsheet, we could probably with a new year, have it within a day.
So the other, the other thing is, is that there are some technical questions having to do with source material and source data and setting the tax rate. So we'll just get everybody that does that working, firing out that issue. Financial management team had questions about this, but they thought that this was a good start.
Yeah, I mean, I, in the spirit of, I agree. You hate to have that accounting shock, but by the same token, I don't want to create something else that's, just because we're, we're trying to mitigate that, you know, you want to kind of go to the right thing. And I'm just wondering, this is a change in accounting method? So it's a question for maybe Melanson Heath to see if there is a way for us to kind of phase it in over a two-year period and maybe have a footnote disclosure or something out there. I mean, I know...
I'm not really following the phase in, what you're talking about, not doing the...
Between the old method and the new method, like having a middle...
Of the hundred and nine...
No, 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 no. I think it's sticking, it's sticking with this method, but how do we phase it in instead of just, like, one year?
Instead of a hundred and nine thousand dollar immediate impact, is there a way for us to...
Go to the bottom line and take a percentage of that?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but this is, this is going to be ongoing. It's going to be a hundred and nine every year. Depends on the percentage.
Well, this is a one-time, this would be a one-time change, really, that drastically. And then everything else would be a curve in relation to how the numbers fit into the overall number. You know, it wouldn't...
It won't be a hundred and nine every year. Next year, for, because this is for the planning budget twenty-one. When we come to doing budget twenty-two, or, and we close fiscal twenty, we're going to print those reports and put them through, and we'll come up with...
Just go out the average of the year before.
We'll do, we'll do the next, the next year's figures. So we'll always be kind of a year behind, but over time it just will work out.
Thank you for tying the numbers to solid things.
You'll tie a more accurate number to the percentage.
And based on this method, too, we can theoretically project these values based on budget projections in these areas.
We could, if only our, you know, if only.
We could, we could, yeah.
Especially benefits. I mean, your regular budgeting is, is very accurate, but it is very difficult sometimes to, with the benefits.
Yeah.
So can I make a motion that we approve this formula? Try to implement that fifty percent of the impact to the bottom line if it's approved by the accountant. If not, I'd like to proceed with this as presented.
And just for a little bigger context, the balanced budget that I submitted back in February takes into account these numbers that I've just presented.
The new numbers.
The numbers that show a hundred and nine thousand dollars.
No problem, anytime.
All right, I'll modify that motion. We'll strike that. I make a motion that we implement this with a hundred and nine thousand dollar effect since we're ready to take it into the budget. Stepping into it slowly.
Well, friendly, isn't it?
Sure.
I, I would like to research the possibility of a phase in. And to the extent that we can find a way to do it, I'd rather free up that fifty thousand that's used in the budget because I believe it's needed. If we can get a viable accounting way to handle it, and then if not, then we would, we would absolutely go with it as presented.
I will accept your change in my motion.
You said, that was the second?
The third.
All right, any further discussion?
I have a question. I, I thought you said auditor before, and then when you're motion you said accountant. So what kind of verification are you looking for?
Well, I would think it has to be potentially Department of Revenue, but I'm thinking Melanson Heath.
Okay, that's, okay, the auditor, right.
Any, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Let's just go real quick here. Ratification of parking requirements on West Street Common. Do you mind if we just do that real quick? Mark, Mark, we got a, Mark's been here for a while, would have jumped it up sooner.
Everybody's been here for a while.
It's a long meeting, I'm sorry. We didn't even get to the budget or the warrant this day. David, did you have something on that, the ratification of the parking?
Yes.
What, what the plan is there?
So we ended up putting up some, after the Tommy Wines came in the last meeting room, we had some parking issues on the common. So what we did is we, the DPW put up some no parking signs in front of his residence, basically on the house side of West Street, which would be the west side of the street. And in hopes to keep his front lawn cleared and the mailboxes and things like that. And then Esseline volunteered to do some repairs to the common and the sidewalk area as well, which were done. Just temporarily until the weather improves where grass could be planted, something along those lines. So I think we needed to vote on the actual confirming whether no parking signs were put up.
Okay. Second?
Sure.
Second?
It's pretty hard with no parking signs facing the road rather than facing the direction of travel.
They have to be facing the road though. Scott, no.
Yeah, they're supposed to be, what we have them are. And we, we did change them the other day. I remember talking to you about actually getting the arrow ones, they have been installed.
Okay. So they have to be basically parallel to the road?
Yes.
Because they're pretty hard to read when somebody come in and...
Kind of sparsely distributed out on that side, so I think there's some confusion as to where people can park there, when not. So it would be helpful to have more signs on that side.
Scott, can you look to see if they're, use another, another sign or two in that area? Just to make it clear so there's not a large space between the signs.
Yeah, we can add if you want.
Just if you think it'll be warranted in that area, we could.
Whatever you feel necessary. It just, the more signs we put up, the, the luck goes away, I guess.
Right.
It's up to you guys, if you want. More will gladly put them up.
All right. We made a motion. Now then.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.
Did you want to say something a little bit?
Did you, did you have something else to say?
I just wanted to say we're, you know, we're working diligently to alleviate the problem that has been occurring, and we'd be happy to have the common back to its original state. It was a very difficult fix a couple of weeks ago with the frozen ground and standing water. There's an odd pitch on the common there. I think there's been water there for, maybe somebody knows better than I forever.
The straw looks good, but the cars are still parking on top of it.
Right. Yeah, so in the next couple of weeks with the DPW's approval, we would go back to it and make it as like new and succeed and such.
Sounds good.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, let's do, Chris, you ought to comment.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The, the east side of West Street. Are you approving that there should be no park, they should be, should be left to them? Because even with the work he and Mark is doing, people are still parking there. So are you, are you, is the board allowing it to be in that format? Because if the board allows it to be in that format, the way it is right now, my view is that we'll have people parking on the east side because we have sign on the west side. So is the board, do you, can the board permit us to put sign on both sides, both east and west side? If we're trying to prevent no parking?
I don't know the opinion of the rest of the board, but my thought was, and after our conversations in the past, was to not have, to have the no parking signs in relation to the corner. So people turning, that wasn't a problem.
Correct.
But we would, we would keep the no parking signs off the common until all his plans go through, at least with what he's doing to the parking lot on his, on his site. Because that's still going through planning board approval and a bunch of other stuff, so kind of letting that work out. That was my understanding. I don't know if that was other people's understanding, but that was mine.
No, I didn't, I didn't understand that. I didn't know that, Mr. Chairman. The reason was, I know we were talking, we had the signs put both on east and west side. And then we were allowed to take it out from the, on the east side. So now that the board is discussing it, is, my understanding is that the board don't want to do anything on the east side until he's, he's all set with his parking.
Yeah.
Well, he settled the planning board.
Yeah, when we're done with all that, let's revisit it and see where we're at.
I brought it up a few meetings ago. Because the north side, east and west, both have no for parking signs to the corners.
Yeah.
For the other island where the water fountain was. But like Chris is talking about, just the other corner, the ball's corner, Fonzie's corner there, to have no parking signs here to corner there also is what you're talking about.
Yes.
Oh, 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 okay. So I was misunderstanding. You're saying that no parking from here to corner on the west side?
We have that already, that's not the way, that is in...
On the east side?
Yes.
On the east side.
But the west lane?
No, on the, on the west, west...
The east side of the west lane?
On the...
As a continent? Yes. Are you talking about the...
Other lane.
Other lane, the east lane?
No.
No, we haven't.
Okay, okay, yeah. Okay, so our understanding is straight, yes. I thought John was talking about something different.
Yeah, no, I had brought up all four corners in one town.
All four corners.
Just the corners. We used to talk about the opposite side of the common, actually.
Yeah, yeah.
Down the whole side.
Yeah, I say let's just, I mean, people park on the common for events. Let's, let's let this work its way out through the planning board and then go from there. I mean, unless we want to do something differently as a board. But that's my understanding and what I think we should do. Okay. All right, thank you. And sewer rates, should we go there?
Sure.
Okay.
Delightful subject.
It's your favorite subject, I would like to...
Yeah. Well, we're going to be doing, doing it this week and two weeks, so, yeah, so...
Two weeks?
Yeah. Tonight we're just talking about our plan, and next time will be our hearing.
Let's just get it done, this is about the fifth time here.
We have to post the hearing. David, do you want to explain it? I know we've been working on it together, but...
It drives me nuts, I keep doing this, why is it over again?
So Christian, myself, Chris Elker, Sharon from the water department, treasurer's office, let's see, the collector's office, and the assessor's office, all met to find the best way to, and David, to find the best way to address this. What we decided on for a proposal that will, right now, we're, at the end of FY twenty-one, we're going to be a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars in the red, the way the sewer enterprise fund is currently operating. So what we're looking at here is a rate increase as well as a infrastructure maintenance fee being implemented. And so what these proposed numbers, which I'll give you in a second, will do, will bring us to FY twenty-seven before we get in the same financial troubles that we're in right now. So gives us a chance to work some options with some surrounding towns, some other possibilities, kind of buy us another six years, hopefully. So what we're looking at is a twenty-five percent increase for the highest commercial users and a fifteen percent increase for residential and the lower-tier commercial users. And just to be clear, we have not had a rate increase on sewer in twelve years, is that correct?
Since two thousand eight.
Since two thousand eight. We did, we did raise water slightly about two years ago. But we have not done anything with sewer, so I've gotten a lot of comments that the rates just went up. They haven't gone up in over a decade.
David, at some point, and I've just, at some point, could you quantify, so would you say twenty-five percent on that? Like, what does that translate to in dollars?
Let's see.
I was trying to find that up here just a second. Um, this average homeowner...
Well, it would be fifteen percent on residential.
Correct.
And the low commercial rate. And we don't have, I guess we don't have that rate information right in front of us, do we?
Customer impact, they don't know about.
Which tab, John, which tab do you want?
That's the sewer model. One sixty-nine, one seventy-one.
Sixty-six, you spoke of, you spoke of fifty percent.
Not that far. Okay, I got you, I can see customer impact, okay, thank you.
So basically, you'd be looking at, for FY twenty-one, would be a hundred and fifty dollars, is that correct?
I think we might have to update this. That, that might not have been updated in this right...
Chris, what's our, what's our current sewer rate for residential, do you know what I'm saying?
I don't, oh, fine. We'll have it, we'll have it a couple of tears.
Yeah.
At a time, oh, with me.
I'm sitting there.
Residential sewer, that's seventeen, it's four dollars and sixty cents.
Correct. So I'm assuming that's the lowest conservation tier, or whatever it's called. So fifteen percent of that is an increase. What did that work out to be? Four dollars, what did you say it was, four dollars and sixty cents?
So four sixty times...
So like a sixty-nine cent increase.
For a thousand dollars.
For a thousand dollars.
Or cubic feet, is it?
Hundred cubic foot, yeah.
Hundred cubic feet, right.
So it looks like just from the, a lot of the analysis, bill, average bill is around four hundred dollars. So if it went up by fifteen percent, it would be sixty dollars, okay, so there you go.
Thank you, yes. In addition to the increase, what we're finding is, those increases alone would not make up the deficit that we're working with, and not put us on the right path, at least for more than a couple of years. So what we want to implement is a ten-dollar infrastructure maintenance fee that would apply to everyone in town who has a water bill. And the reason for this is, as John mentioned before, putting sewer on taxation rather than just putting on taxation already. Everybody in town benefits from the Route Nine Business District and those commercial businesses that are, that require sewer in order to write our tax rate at the twelve thirty-six that it currently is. So the nine hundred or so sewer users that currently pay for the sewer system are the only people that are contributing to the sewer system that supports those...
that are contributing to the sewer system that supports those businesses. By adding the infrastructure maintenance fee, everybody in town that has water is kicking in 10 bucks a bill toward maintaining that system and maintaining operations for those systems. So that's our, our way of kind of sharing the burden. We're looking at a large infrastructure rebuilding with the Route 9 reconstruction project, with new sewer lines, new water lines, things along those, along those lines. And under our current structure, by FY27, if we did nothing, we'd be $2.7 million in the red, the way we're operating currently.
Wow, thank you.
So, not very good. Tim?
How did that $10 get calculated, if I may ask?
So we looked initially at $5 and see how long that would buy us down the road, and basically it would have bought us two to three years max.
So based on years?
Right. And so the $10 amount would at least get us to FY27 based on these models. Now, these are only models, so if we have some massive sewer break, you know, pumping station needs to be, I don't know, rebuilt or something along those lines, this could all change. But based on the best models we have, this would get us to FY27 before we're in as bad a shape as we are now.
Can you clarify for people, when you say $10 a bill, when they're getting billed quarterly, are you saying that's $40 a year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
You are, why do people?
$10 a bill? Do you only get one bill?
You still need a rate? You didn't tell me you wanted a bill every month, too?
What are you going to bring on the show?
Yeah, really.
Chris had something.
You still need a rate or you are saying?
Uh, yeah, well, I think it's about 60 bucks a year is what the increase would be.
That would be for the average residential bill, I believe. I would have to double check, but just from what I'm seeing in front of us, and we can clarify that for next week.
I really want to put this in front of the people, put a couple capital articles on the wall and see if the town wants to fund it as a.
I just feel like we should, we need to do something, and we could do that, but I feel like we need to do this now, because even if we do this in two weeks, I, the, bills don't go into effect, when would that go into effect? When, do you know? You don't know? Sue would know.
Sue would know.
Would be no.
Based on our conversation, if we pass this at our next meeting, after the public hearing, it would have time for this next water bill based on what the collector said in our meeting.
And to Joyce's point, too, just to, to kind of bring people back, we started this conversation quite a while ago, and, but, but we didn't, when I say quite a while, I'm just talking about this, this particular career, fiscal year. And there was disagreement about whether or not to move forward with a rate increase at the time, and the reason that we didn't was because people rightfully felt that we needed more information and also more time to explore other possible opportunities, right? And those things have happened, and we've had gotten a lot more input from people. The facts haven't changed from the standpoint that we still clearly have, are putting ourselves on a path to increasing this deficit. So, yeah, I'm absolutely in favor of moving forward. We have to have the hearing, right, in two weeks' time anyway. But, you know, and I understand what John's saying, but I think that's part of the potential for, we still need a longer term solution, and that this doesn't negate the opportunity to continue to have that discussion. This is just doing something so another 12 years doesn't go by.
Because, yeah, the way we're doing things now, last town meeting, special town meeting, we transferred, it was 180,000 from stabilization?
Oh, it was more than that, it's like 240,000.
Okay, so from stabilization to the sewer enterprise fund, because we would have been negative by 150,000 this year if it wasn't for that transfer. And so having to go back to town meeting every year and ask the voters to pay more money or chip in another $100,000 overall, overall tax money can't be depended on. And so we could get to a point where we're, we're broke and can't, can't pay our bills at the end of the year, the way things are going now, if town meetings and no.
Yeah. Okay, so.
For next week?
Yeah, that's for next week. We'll have the hearing next time, and unless we have any more comments, less quick comments.
A quick one, so, just to be crystal clear for people, sewer people will have a possible $60 increment each bill, average.
Well, that's annual, I believe.
Is that annual or each bill now? Which one are we going to say?
That is annual, annual.
So that's annual.
And we bill quarterly now?
We bill quarterly.
So in 15, roughly $15 a quarter. And I want to clarify that for next meeting, too, so.
And so the non-s sewer people, the water users, will get billed $10 per quarter.
Correct. $40 here.
Or does the sewer people get both?
Yes.
So, that's what I'm getting at, jump the gun, so the sewer people will also get billed an extra $10.
Water bills will go up over $100.
Yep.
Okay, that's what I wanted to just clarify, they will also be billed.
Water and sewer bills will go up over $100.
But, Tim, for the first time, non-s sewer customers like myself will be throwing in $10 to help.
Well, we thank you very much.
$40.
Yes, $40, sorry.
Yeah, and $40.
$10, you get stuck on that 10.
I know.
You're all failing to see the light at the end of the tunnel. As long as coming into Hadley, it causes dry mouth.
There's always a light.
All right, so we'll end there, and we'll talk about it, not next week, but next meeting. Yes. Okay, we can move on. Town administrator search, contract for recruiting services. We have a contract in front of us with MRI. They are going to put together a bunch of information, interviewing some elected officials in town, people in town to kind of shape what kind of ideal candidate we're looking for, and then come up with an advertisement to send out to the world for us to recruit a new town administrator. And then we'll work to screen those candidates and interview them, and eventually get it down to a group, a panel in town can meet with and decide on our next town administrator. So this would just be to kind of get the whole process started. I don't think we need to form a committee or anything along those lines at this stage, but this would be to get the process rolling.
Motion to approve, second.
I got one question.
Yep.
Well, two. So this says that the rate of $9,800 does not include advertising, which I understand, but accommodations for onsite interviews or reimbursement of candidate travel expenses. I have no desire to reimburse candidates for traveling for an interview or to provide them accommodations for interviewing for a possible job.
Absolutely.
I had this, accommodations for coming to an interview.
I had this question for David earlier in the day, and I was like, is this a normal thing for town administrators? It doesn't seem like it, so it doesn't sound like it.
Is it candidate or is it the folks from MRI?
It says candidate.
Well, that would be the candidate.
I can't tell you that other towns have hired county administrators from places like Ohio or Virginia, that has tended to not pan out well, so I think it would be.
Yeah. And that doesn't say it's a requirement to do that, it just says it's not included.
Many, many years ago, I applied for a job in the city of Folsom, California. They invited me for an interview, but they made it very clear that it's on my dime to get there.
As it should be for everybody.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, I just want to be clear that we're not paying for that, so public sees that, we're not buying hotel rooms.
And on the advertising note, it is in the budget, so, yeah.
That's a reasonable expense.
Yeah. Uh, okay. That was it, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And if you could then approve a transfer, request for transfer from the reserve fund to cover the cost of this contract, that would be very handy.
Motion to approve, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. About senior center library and fire substation updates?
About building inspections.
We are going to make that executive session.
We are?
You're going to slide?
I'm not sliding.
I'm sorry. You kept asking those questions on sewer, it's really extended the meeting, Joyce.
I know, this isn't under the executive thing.
Just some things came up today that I feel like it would be best discussed in executive session. Yeah.
Unforeseen.
Unforeseen.
I got you, okay.
Okay, so why don't we just do senior center library and fire substation? Do you, who wants to go first? How about library? So Joyce and I can get our things in order. Okay, never mind.
I mean, basically, the, the library, there's really nothing major to report. Things are on track. We haven't had any change orders yet, we're excited about that. We had a fundraising, we had a fundraising committee meeting on Monday night, so the fundraising is going well. You know, we've met the commitment so far that we said that we would, but there's, you know, in light of some of the things that we haven't been able to do, the really kind of full court press on to the fundraising from businesses and private individuals, et cetera, looking at grant, uh, grant applications to see if we can get some additional funding in for solar, for reading room.
Great. Joyce, would you like to go on your, on the fire substation? No, I'm still trying to find something.
Okay, so we had our finance meeting last night. I have two change orders for you to approve tonight, and that would be the sep, um, potential separate locker room, which is the, for the turnout here. This is actually, very quickly down the road, it's going to be required by the FPA as well as OSHA. So that bill comes to $24,723.53. We unanimously voted for it at finance and during our regular meeting. Any questions on that?
What was it?
It's a locker room for the turnout here.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Because you're going to need to keep it in a protected area.
Yeah.
So like a locked fence area?
It's a, it's a room that we built, we're building.
Because that's, that's the gear that, that's like possibly a cause of cancer and spread and different things, it's consolidating it to one room so that it can be cleaned in there and doesn't, yeah, yeah.
And then the other one is for.
Dispatch.
A dispatch council. So this is for the council that will be going in dispatch. Basically, it's going to be just like the one that we have downstairs, so that it mimics what we have and where things will go, so that if we have to, there won't be any added training when people, if we should have to use that up there, they will just be able to go in and use the equipment that's there. That bill is $13,533.1. And that again was approved by all, at both meetings last night. That's all I have for those two proposals. We have a final contingency fund of $545,785.97 left over after those meetings.
Make a motion to approve PCO 21R2 and PCO 25.
Second.
Didn't we, I thought we voted on the dispatcher?
We did, we did not vote on it because I didn't have the number.
Oh, okay.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Was there a second?
Yes.
Okay, I thought there was, yeah, okay.
And everything is coming along. We're moving into the walls, electric inside and the plumbing, and as you can see from the outside, they're almost done finishing with the roofing, they'll be wrapping that up this month. And they've been putting some nice siding and stuff up also right now, so it's looking very nice, it really fits in with the character of the area there, so quite handsome building.
Looking good, nice. Well, Jane, would you like to update on the senior center?
It's a, it's crazy in there, I was in there today, there's seven different groups of contractors working to make our May first occupancy deadline. So we have electricians, plumbers, sheet rockers, carpenters, painters, tile workers, and the stonemason for the fireplace. But it's all coming along, and if you go in tomorrow, all these things that weren't done today are done tomorrow. Really incredible. So it's very exciting.
Yeah, yeah, when they were going through the list earlier today, I was, I was astonished. Drywall's done, finished carpentry's going, painting's started, you know, appliances are moving in, all kinds of things, so it's really making progress.
And the only one of those, those trades that has one person there is a stonemason. Everybody else has a whole, handful for each, so it's, you need Grand Central Station traffic compared.
Okay, and then I have just two PCOs and one change order that we've proved most everything on, but I guess we have to vote to approve that overall change order. So it's basically, we have all the preliminary change orders, and then this is one change order that kind of pays for all of them. So the first one is for PCO 40R1, that's a pressure reducing valve, and that's for the domestic water service, and that's at the cost of $1,054.51. And then I have a second PCO that doesn't look like it made it into board docs, and it's not your fault, because it came last minute, it's number 41, it's for an AV closet, and that is in the amount of $2,889.86.
Was that not included in the $145,000 change order for the AV equipment?
This is the closet. Jane, do you know what the closet is?
So it's actually.
Here.
It's actually two closets.
Yeah.
That were empty chases when the building was being built, and I said, we want storage in those, and they said, okay. And then the audio people said, rather than have our stuff in the IT room, we'd be much better with it out here in terms of interference from electronic stuff, I assume, where it's mostly going to be used. So the east side will be electronic, I, uh, audio's, equipment stuff, and the other side will be storage for tablecloths and linens and things.
That's what it is.
What's the, what's the remaining contingency?
I knew you were going to ask me that. You want me to pick up my computer for now?
Approximately $339,000.
It's only $2,000.
Yeah. So may I have a motion for those two change orders?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, and then the final one is the change order, which is in the amount of, oh, great, all these numbers, I believe it's $19,564.54. And this is for, final change order for PCO 33. Oh, and this is change order number 006. Uh, and it's for a decorative baller at the, ballard at the sidewalk, a catch basin, a call for aid system in the bathrooms, a domestic hot water pump, additional plaques, and then the PRV is on there as well. So we've voted on all these before.
We've voted on all of them.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Weren't sure whether we needed to vote on that or not, so we, we did it.
Like ambulance?
And then ambulance, yes, thank you. Ambulance agreement extension from Action EMS. I don't know if we, is there any discussion points or differences between our last contract with them? I know we've been happy with the service and everything going on.
So this is our first contract with them, it's a two-year contract, so it's going to expire June 30th, 2020. The contract allows for a one-year extension. We've already plugged that number into the budget, so we know what that is, and we know that we have a balanced budget.
David, we're just three years of pricing, right? Right, so, so we already have the pricing locked in.
Right.
It's the.
But the contract, there's only two years. So I'm going to talk to the, the fire chief, he and I are both in agreement that this has been a home run for the town of Hadley. They provide an excellent service, and certainly have been out there very active, keeping people healthy, saving lives. I would, I recommend that we extend the contract for one year and use this year to assess the longer term's ambulance arrangement.
So the reimbursements will remain the same if we hit our receipts, receipt targets? And is the ambulance oversight committee going to start digging into a new contractor? We have to reestablish a committee to work on that? or we have to reestablish a committee to work on that?
No, I mean, I would assume that they will. I would need to be replaced on it, but, hey, and Barmum think they're pretty comfortable continuing. And I guess the only question I have, I think there's no question on the part of the oversight committee that we're extremely pleased. And when we got into the contract, we did the two-year with the one-year renewal. I'm just wondering, has Action asked for anything longer than a one-year extension?
I actually think that this one-year time period is a time for us to start looking at advancing towards a BLS and seeing where that goes. But I'm just, I think we need to look at it. I mean, it's a period of time that, you know, it might be worthwhile for us to have our own, but I'm not, you know, that's my own thoughts, and I've been at this for a long time thinking about it, and been working on that committee for a number of years also, getting established and even having our own ambulance service at this point to what we have now. And I think it certainly needs to be looking at where we go forward instead of, you know, you're only talking about a one-year contract. That certainly isn't enough time to even think about building our own ambulance service, if that's what we were thinking.
Well, that's what I'm wondering. Do we...
Never mind that. How are you going to fund it?
Well, no, but to your point, Joyce, I'm wondering, do we want to... Because now we're two years in, we're obviously so pleased. Yes, that's a big question that's out there, but there's no way it would happen within two years anyway. Is there any reason to actually go back to Action and ask that if they would be interested in proposing a two-year extension as opposed to one?
I think keep the same terms and pricing and reimbursement. Obviously, they're making the revenues they need to make. They're doing what they need to do for us. Ask them if they can extend it for two years.
That certainly would be a negotiable thing for us to do, and that would give us time to start looking at, you know, where we're going also. I still feel like it still would be a moneymaker. I heard today from somebody that works in Amherst, I saw him, and they are not happy with what happened here because they lost revenue. So, that was their own ball drop. But for us, we've, you know, been happy with what we have.
Just exactly what you said. Maybe that's a reason to look and see what Mark Hampton or Amherst has to offer, along with a private service, which we went with, to service our town, because Amherst has been servicing this town for a lot of years. And they have excellent service.
But they can't service themselves.
Right now, that's not even an option over there. And I've talked to many people about it.
Anyway, I think first and foremost, we all...
We're not talking to the same people.
First and foremost, we all agreed that what matters is our residents and businesses and the quality of care that they're getting. So, I would like to propose that we request Action give us a two-year extension proposal.
David, you had something?
So, the law might have changed on this, but anything above three years, we've got to be a town meeting vote to approve, so I don't think that...
We don't have to have a town meeting vote to set this up.
If it's above three years.
Well, this is not two years.
I know.
Right. So, you have a three-year... So, you have a two-year contract, you're going to extend it to four years. I think that final year needs to be approved by town meeting.
No, no, we're extending it two years from now. You're saying because it would be a four-year, it would have to go back to town meeting?
So, you've got a two-year contract, you're going to extend it to three years. You can do that without town meeting vote. To extend it that additional year, I believe, but I could be wrong, I'll do the research, that you have to get a town meeting vote to approve.
Why wouldn't we agree mutually to end the two-year contract and enter into another two-year contract?
You could do that, yes. We would have to negotiate.
Soul-sleept, devil-bearer.
We could do that.
I'm sure we could negotiate something.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Was that a motion?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. Oh, town administrator reports. Any... Anything we have missed, David, that needs to be covered in that report?
The only thing... This is available online. People can read it for all the updates. The newest thing that we've done is we've started to look at the emergence of the threat of the new coronavirus, COVID-19. We're working with our state, regional, local public health officials to develop plans for responding to any threat. And just to give everybody the assurance at present, there's no known cases of COVID-19 in the valley. The only one case known in Massachusetts is in Norfolk County, about over in Boston.
What, in Pittsburgh?
I haven't heard that one. I knew it.
No, it was the other day that there was somebody quarantined in Pittsfield.
Okay. So, somebody in Pittsfield. School superintendent, town administrator, board of health emergency management department, are working with the other town departments to develop continuity of operation plans to minimize risk of transmission and ensure that public services continue to be provided if cases may appear locally.
Wash your hands and cover your mouth when you cough. That's about the bottom line for any flu. So, just everybody do that. You'll be safe. It's national. It's just one of those things that you commonly do, and you'll be well and healthy.
Thank you. Everything else is progressing well. Pre-test end of year approved, Board Schedule A. The audit is moving forward counting. Revenues are coming in better than expected. Expenses have kept lower than expected this month. April 5th, helping hearts for Hadley schools, 5K race. April 6th, Hadley Mothers Club candidates forum. April 14th, annual town elections. And May 7th, annual town meeting.
Great. Thank you. Any announcements other than what we have?
I do have a couple.
Additional announcements?
But I think we all have, we have one seat becoming available this coming year. Molly is dissenting from us after a number of years of helping with all of us, who have been very active. So, we have four of the candidates are here tonight. And you all like to stand up and just introduce yourselves to TV, let them see who you are.
Hi. I'll go first. I'm Nicole Burcium. I grew up in Hadley. I graduated from Hopkins in '06. After that, I moved to Florida for a little bit for school and law school. I met my husband in law school, and we moved back to Hadley five years ago. I have a four-year-old in preschool and a nine-month-old at home. Andrew and I recently opened an office in Hadley, so we have a local business here. We're both attorneys there, and I'm looking forward to hopefully serving on the board.
Thank you. Next is Amy.
Hi. I'm Amy Parsons. I'm from Hadley. I'm a 13th-generation farmer. I work for the U.S. Department of Agriculture. I graduated from Hopkins Academy also in 2006. I went to Kansas State University. I got a bachelor's of science in agricultural business. I now work, like I said, for the U.S. Department of Agriculture. I also work on the family farm. I am back in Hadley. I worked for seven years in the private sector for a multibillion-dollar company, Conagra, and I did production scheduling, transportation logistics, OSHA safety compliance, production management, and I also did HR functions as well. So, I am capable of looking at something from a big-picture standpoint. I also look forward to running for the board and hopefully joining you guys next year.
Thank you.
Jane?
Hi, I'm Jane Nevin Smith. I've lived in Hadley more than half of my life. Two of my children graduated from Hopkins. I've been involved in a lot of different jobs in my life, from construction to ownership of companies, to organizing people, and I think all of these attributes give me skills that will be an asset if I come to the board. And I encourage everybody, regardless of which of us you vote for, to vote. That's critical.
Thank you.
I'm Brenda Woman.
I'm Brenda Fighting Cavitz. I've been here since 1988. I started my own business almost 24 years ago. It'll be 24 years in September, and I don't like public speaking. You know, that's my one downfall, but I know I have many, many pluses to bring to the board. I have an extensive business background. I have 15 employees. I'm not a multibillion company like Amy worked for, but I am me. And I do, you know, we have a fam... I mean, it's a small family business, and our people are a business family. I mean, we do, we primarily do just commercial shopping centers and hospitals and things like that. And, you know, we're pretty busy, and, you know, my husband and my daughter gave me their blessing to, you know, throw my ring and the hat, my hat and the ring, and say, "See, I told you." Nervous, but that's okay. And this town is just a wonderful town, and I think that, you know, it's, we have to keep moving on and just be, you know, responsible for our taxpayer dollars and do the best job that we can do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other answers?
Good luck to all you who are going on next month.
Thank you. Good luck to everybody.
Thank you.
We have a few little witcherries to read tonight. To the family of Susan Rondo, wife of Bruce, our condolences to their family. Christopher Kies, condolences to his family. Dr. Kathleen Holland, who practiced for many years in Northampton, raised her two children here in Hadley. Our condolences to her. She was, you know, she loved her patients, and I loved her. We also, to the condolences, Teresa Couche, her daughter is neurocosic that lives here in town. So, our condolences to all of their families for this life work.
Thank you. Anyone else with any announcements? All right. So, we are going to move into executive session. We will not return in open session, and I have a motion to get into the executive session. We've got it there.
Speaking of which, we're...
Hi, dude.
You've got, you've got that.
My name is outside. Speaking of which, we're...
Making a motion?
We never want to say it, but it's coming.
Just the two topics, the three topics I have to speak about.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
I have a second. As Chair of the Hadley Select Board, I state that the Board has moved consecutive to enter into executive session, and that I state that discussing the matter in open session will have an adverse effect on the town of Hadley. It will not convene in open session. Roll call vote, please.
I see your show.
Yes. Yes. Thank you. Thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you, too. See you later.
You can't leave.